For those in the room, please silence your electronics. Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Leah McKenna, and I am the Administrator of the Solid Waste Management Bureau at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I am serving as the Presiding Officer for today's hearing. Before we start, I invite the Director of the Waste Management Division, Mike Wimsat, to say a few words. Mike?
Thanks, Leah. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm glad to see you all here. As you know, this is a public hearing to take oral testimony on our proposed Solid Waste Landfill Rules Chapter ENVOR, excuse me, ENVSW 800. And it's a very important part of the rulemaking process, so we're looking forward to hearing your testimony. And so we don't delay, I will just turn right back to Leah to get underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wimsat. For the record, it is Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 1:03 PM. Please note that this hearing is limited to public comments regarding Chapter ENVSW 800, the landfill requirements of the solid waste rules. The chapter is set to expire July 1st of this year. The rulemaking notice for these rules was published in the New Hampshire Rulemaking Register on April 25th, 2024, as Notice Number 2024-2024-74. This hearing is being held on the date, time, and location indicated in that notice. In accordance with RSA 541A, the Administrative Procedures Act, DES is holding the hearing to provide interested parties reasonable opportunity to testify on rules proposed for readoption by the department. This hearing is being held in person, as well as via Microsoft Teams, to provide increased access. Please note that this hearing is being recorded. Can you all hear me okay in the back of the room? Do I need to project anymore? We're good? Thank you. During this hearing, I'll provide an overview of the technology that we'll be using. I'll explain the mechanism for submitting written comments and how to register to provide verbal comments. We'll provide a summary of the rule and proposed changes. And lastly, we will receive your public comments. All attendees have the opportunity to listen and will be able to provide verbal testimony when invited through the Microsoft Teams platform, by phone, or in person. At this time, I'm going to provide an introduction to the Microsoft Teams platform that we are using for this hearing. You will notice the Teams webinar dashboard in the upper right of your screen that I'll refer to when providing instructions. The dashboard has a microphone button that will allow you to speak only when you are called upon after DES staff enables your microphone. You also have access to the chat function that I will explain shortly. As of now, that function is turned off and will be enabled later. Your video should be disabled and will remain in that state during hearing. Right now, all virtual attendees are muted, and you should be able to see and hear me. Attendees will remain in this state until I open the floor for comments. I will provide detailed instructions on how to request to speak shortly. If you need technical assistance with Microsoft Teams, we have Jeremy Lewis of DES available to help. You can reach Jeremy by phone at area code 860-387-9931, or by email at jeremy.m.lewis@des.nh.gov. Jeremy's contact information and the phone number and access code for calling in are provided on the screen. If you are experiencing trouble using computer audio, we also suggest calling in. If you do call in, to avoid an echo, please turn off your computer speakers. I'll provide instructions shortly regarding when to use your microphone. Until you're called upon to speak, your microphone will be disabled. I will now provide instructions on how to provide written comments. Written comments on the proposed rules may be submitted until the close of the public comment period on Wednesday, June 5th, at 4:00 PM. Written comments should be submitted to SWMV Rules at des.nh.gov. After the close of the comment period, the department will consider all comments received and will decide whether to revise the rules in response to the comments. The department will file its final proposed rules for consideration by the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, otherwise known as JLCAR. The department will post the final proposed rules on its administrative rulemaking page. At this time, I would like to introduce Jamie Colby of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. Jamie will now provide a brief overview of the proposed rules. Jamie?
Thank you, Leah. Good afternoon. As Leah stated, my name is Jamie Colby, and I'm Supervisor of the Engineering and Permitting Section in the Solid Waste Management Bureau at DES. The proposed rules we are receiving public comment on today are those contained in Chapter ENVSW 800, Landfill Requirements. This chapter identifies requirements applicable to non-hazardous solid waste landfills. Landfills are essentially permanent disposal locations for solid waste. Modern landfills are engineered waste containment systems that include not only the waste containment system, but also leachate, landfill gas, and stormwater management infrastructure, as well as supporting infrastructure such as an office building, truck scales, and maintenance facilities. This is a lengthy chapter in the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules. As shown on the slide, the chapter consists of 10 parts and is about 40 some odd pages long. The department is proposing many changes to the chapter. I will provide a brief overview of some of the proposed changes. Please do see the rulemaking notice and the initial proposed rule language for further details. Both of those are available on DES's website. Let's begin. In Part ENV 80402, Regarding Groundwater Protection Requirements, the department proposes to increase the scope of applicability for groundwater protection requirements in part by adding stormwater and decomposition gas, also known as landfill gas, to the list of infrastructure associated with the landfill and required to be located only in areas where groundwater monitoring for release detection, characterization, and remediation can be conducted. DES also proposes to add that such infrastructure must be cited in a manner that allows monitoring, characterization, and remediation to be conducted prior to a release having an impact on groundwater quality at the property. The department proposes to add a requirement that the five feet of undisturbed in situ soils immediately beneath a landfill footprint have an average saturated hydraulic conductivity of five times 10 to the minus three centimeters a second or less. In Part ENV SW 80403, Regarding Surface Water Protection Standards, the department proposes to increase the scope of applicability for surface water protection requirements in part by adding stormwater and decomposition gas infrastructure to the list of infrastructure associated with the landfill and required to be located such that adverse impacts of surface water quality due to erosion, sedimentation, siltation, flood, or discharge of contaminants can be prevented or minimized and mitigated by facility design. DES proposes to add a requirement that a landfill and associated infrastructure be located in such a way that a release or other failure can be detected, assessed, and remediation initiated prior to contamination reaching any perennial water body. The department also proposes to increase the setback for third order and higher perennial streams and other perennial surface waters from 200 feet to 500 feet. DES proposes to revise the wetland setback requirement to remove references to upgradient and downgradient citing and via uniform 200 feet. The department proposes to revise the setback requirement for surface water reservoirs and intakes to remove an upgradient only setback and require a uniform 1,000-foot setback. DES proposes to require landfills be sighted outside the 500-year floodplain. In Part ENV SW 80404, Regarding Setbacks, the department proposes to add a requirement that a 1,000-foot setback exists between a landfill footprint and properties containing public schools, licensed daycare facilities, and hospitals. In Part 80503, Regarding Landfill Subgrade and Base Grade Standards, the department proposes to add a requirement that where undisturbed in situ soils are not present, the base for a landfill must be prepared to a depth of 24 inches using a soil with a saturated hydraulic conductivity of 10 to the minus four centimeters a second or less. In Part ENV SW 80506, Regarding Leachate Collection and Removal System Design Standards, the department proposes to require a 20% increase in the quantity of leachate that systems must be designed to manage. DES proposes to require backup high-water alarms and automatic dialers. The department also proposes to add a requirement that leachate infrastructure located outside the landfill footprint must have secondary containment or be double-walled. In Part ENV SW 80508, Regarding Groundwater and Surface Water Monitoring System Design Standards, the department proposes to clarify that groundwater monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations must be based on site-specific hydrogeology. In Part ENV SW 80509, Regarding Stormwater Management System Design Standards, the department proposes to require stormwater, require that stormwater systems be designed based on the 50-year, 24-hour storm event instead of the 25-year, 24-hour storm event. In Part ENV SW 80510, Regarding Landfill Capping System Design Standards, the department proposes to revise the slope requirements for a capping system from an average to a maximum slope. In Part ENV SW 80511, Regarding Other Landfill Design Requirements, the department proposes to revise vegetated buffer zones, incorporating them as a design requirement, and adding minimum vegetated buffer zones in the setbacks between the landfill footprint and the property line. DES proposes to add a requirement that odor control plans be prepared and implemented when construction involves excavation of putrescible or smelly waste. The department proposes to add and clarify requirements for stability assessments, seismic analyses, and settlement evaluations. DES also proposes to add language to clarify that a permit or permit modification shall not be granted unless groundwater monitoring can be accomplished in accordance with applicable statutes and rules. In Parts ENV SW 80512, Regarding Municipal Solid Waste, or MSW, Landfill Design Standards, and ENV SW 80515, Regarding Design Standards for Landfills Receiving Other Solid Waste Types, the department proposes to require that one of the two liners in these landfills be a composite liner. That is, one liner must consist of both a geomembrane and a clay layer, or a geomembrane and geosynthetic clay layer. In Part ENV SW 80516, Regarding Quality Assurance/Quality Control Standards for Liner and Capping Systems, the department proposes to revise the entire section for clarity and consistency, and to update references to ASTM standards, as well as to ensure quality assurance, quality control plans are applicable to all components of landfill liner and capping systems. Finally, to the design requirements, the department proposes to add a new section for decomposition gas control and migration monitoring systems to set minimum standards. We'll now move on to operating requirements. In Part ENV SW 80603, Regarding Landfill Cover During Operations, the department proposes to require an alternate daily cover materials, that is, cover materials other than soils and geosynthetic tarps, to be approved through a demonstration process. Existing approvals for alternate daily cover materials are proposed to be grandfathered. The department also proposes to add minimum requirements for intermediate cover, as well as when a final capping of a landfill must occur. In Part ENV SW 80605, Leachate Management Requirements, the department proposes to add a requirement that leachate management systems manage not only quantities from routine operations plus the 25-year storm event, but also an additional 20%. In Part ENV SW 80608, Regarding Inspections, Maintenance, Monitoring, Reporting, and Record-Keeping Requirements, the department proposes to add leachate analytical characterization testing for per- and polyfluoroalpolsubstances, known as PFAS, as well as certain wastewater parameters, and require that an evaluation of leachate characterization data be included with data submitted to DES. The department proposes to require annual odor control evaluation reports for landfills that manage putrescible waste. The department proposes to require quarterly operating reports to include complaints and response actions to those complaints, as well as a summary of leachate breakouts. The department proposes to require annual reports to include five-year trend analyses of leachate flow rates and leachate indicator parameters. In Part ENV SW 80609, Regarding Other Operating Standards, the department proposes to add a requirement that a permit be posted to its publicly available website in Contact Us form, or a phone number and email address for the public to use to submit questions and issues relating to the facility. Moving on to closure requirements, the department proposes to add a new section regarding post-closure use of a landfill, specifically including provisions for when approval of a post-closure use is required, minimum standards on the post-closure use, how to seek post-closure use approval, post-closure use construction requirements, and what occurs when a post-closure use ends. That was a brief overview of some of the proposed changes in Chapter ENVSW 800, which addresses landfill requirements. Please do see the rulemaking notice and the initial proposed rule language for further details. Again, both of those are available through DES's website. Leah?
Jamie? I will now provide instructions on how to register to provide verbal comments on Chapter ENVSW 800. If you wish to speak and are physically present, if you haven't done so already, please fill out a comment card during the break that we'll have in just a couple of moments, and give the card to the DES staff member in the back of the room. It's Mary Down in the back of our room. For those of you participating virtually who would like to comment, you will need to type your name, address, and affiliation into the chat box. The information you type in the chat box is not your comment, and you should not type any substantive content in the box. Please only type information to identify who you are. For those participating by phone who would like to comment, you'll need to dial *5 on your keypad to raise your hand to signal that you'd like to comment. When instructed to do so after the break, you'll dial *6 to unmute your microphone. If you are a senator or representative and would like to be called up early in the queue, please write senator or representative before your name on your comment card or in the chat box. We will attempt to put you up front in both in-person and virtual queues. For those of you who are virtual or participating by phone, we will call your name and enable your microphone so that you can make your comment. Please note that when you are unmuted and speaking, the department and all other attendees will hear you. If you are having technical difficulties, please contact Jeremy Lewis, and we will continue on the list until you are able to speak. We will take the names of everyone wishing to speak and list them on the screen. This way, you can see where you are on the list. We will be taking comments from those who are in person first, followed by virtual attendees, and then those participating by phone. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please graciously yield the floor within five minutes so that I can call the next speaker. We will proceed through the listed names to give everyone the opportunity to provide testimony. In addition to providing verbal comments, the department would appreciate written copies of those verbal comments via email to SWMVRules@des.nh.gov. Before we proceed with taking public comments, we will take a 10-minute break to allow attendees time to register to speak. For ENVSW 800 of the solid waste rules, for the record, it is 1:31 PM on Monday, May 20th, 2024. We are now ready to receive comments. We will start with attendees physically present at the hearing. When your name is called, please come to the microphone at the front of the room to make your comment. A DES staff member will hold up a yellow sign to notify you when you have one minute remaining to speak, and a red sign will signal that your time is up. After everyone in the room has had a chance to speak, we will open it up to virtual attendees, and then to those participating by phone. When called on, please ensure that your microphone is not muted, and begin your comments by stating your name, address, and affiliation. As a reminder, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. I will notify you when you have one minute remaining to speak. I can see that we have multiple people who have indicated that they would like to speak in the room. Our first commenter will be Representative Nicholas Germana, followed by Muriel Robinett. Representative Germana, please come up. You'll just need to turn on the microphone button on the top.
You can say "just" as if it's a simple... Is it just the button? Yeah, I think it's on. It's a great line. Good. All right. Thank you very much. So I wanted to, I won't comment in great detail. There are a lot of folks here who have a lot more specific knowledge that they can use to examine the draft rules. I just want to comment as somebody who's been following the draft rules from the earliest iteration last October to what we have currently, and I think it's important that we keep in mind not just the difference between existing rules and the current draft, but also the first iteration, that first draft of rules in October, and the difference between that draft and what we have before us right now. And one of the concerns that I've expressed before is that that initial draft in October had a, for subgrade material, it had a hydraulic conductivity rate of 1 times 10 to the negative fifth. That is a standard that exists in a lot of states. A lot of states actually have higher standards than that. Maine has 1 times 10 to the negative fifth. That has now been reduced to 1 times, 1 times 10 to the negative fourth, so it's been weakened by 10 times. And I know some folks are going to speak about that. I think the feedback that we had when questions have been asked about this is that folks in the industry have said that 1 times 10 to the negative fifth is too burdensome for them. Again, this is a standard that the companies who operate in New Hampshire also operate in other states. They operate under stricter regulations in other states. And here in New Hampshire, for example, in Rochester, at Turnkey, their subgrade material is 1 times 10 to the negative seventh. So going from 1 times 10 to the negative fifth, a more protective standard in the October draft to what we're seeing now, 1 times 10 to the negative fourth, based from what I can tell primarily on industry feedback, when we know that in other states and in at least one landfill here in New Hampshire, we can do better. We can have a more protective standard, and some of these companies are certainly capable of doing that as they do in other states. The other concern that I have, or one of the other concerns that I have, has to do with the setback distance itself. As I have mentioned many times in hearings, when we're talking about feet, which is not, as I understand it, actually how most states define the distance, or at least a lot of the states that we looked at, we're looking at that travel time, right? So that hydraulic conductivity, the porosity of the subgrade material at the site. And we should be measuring in terms of travel time. That setback of 200 feet, or 500 feet, or 1,000 feet, depending on the specific part of the rules, feet is a function of time. How long is it going to take a potential leak to get from a landfill to the source that it could contaminate? And that is about time, the time that we need to be able to detect and engage in remediation. And so I'm frustrated that we're continuing to use a standard which is abstract. It's not site-specific. If we were talking about a three-year or a five-year travel time for water to be able to move from a site to a protected body of water, for example, that is a site-specific standard. 200 to 500 feet, for example, is, as you said, it is not an abstract, or it is an abstract standard. It's not a site-specific standard. We should be looking at each individual site and saying, given the conditions that we have here, given the expectations regarding engineering, how long would we have for a leak to get from that site to a body of water? And setting that standard in terms of, say, three years or five years, as other states do. So those are the two of the concerns that I have had and have voiced from the beginning. I felt like there was agreement along the lines that in the end, distance is a function of time, and so I think the standard should be expressed in terms of time. And then, as I said, my other concern is about why we have gone from an October draft with a more protective standard that these companies can meet, that at least one of our landfills in the state that I saw recently, I know does meet, why we then have gone from a more protective standard in October to a less protective standard in the current draft.
Thank you for your comments, Senator.
Thank you.
Next, we have Muriel Robinett, followed by Adam Finkel.
Thank you very much, Muriel. What did I drop there? Is that better? Okay. Muriel Robinett, and I represent North Country ABC. My education experience really matters with respect to these rules. And what I'd like to say is that, you know, I was educated in geology at the University of New Hampshire, and we studied New Hampshire geology. We also studied New England geology and how it's similar or different among the states. And the other thing is that I've been practicing in New Hampshire as a consulting geologist since 1984, which is 40 years of experience. And so I feel that I have a pretty significant feeling for the geology of this state. So with that background and that perspective, I would like to speak to two of the issues in your rules. We will be, as a group, submitting significant written comments and refereed period you journals and everything that you ask for. So I will just keep my remarks brief. What I'd like to address is ENV 80402 and ENV 80403. Now, 80402 is that issue of the hydraulic conductivity of the site. And the textbooks that we will be citing talk about best practices for citing landfills, and they don't say cite them on sand. And 5 times 10 to the minus three is basically sand, clean sand, as a matter of fact, at a travel rate of about 15 feet per day, which is orders of magnitude higher than what's allowed in almost any other state that I'm even aware of. The other rule I'd like to address is the setback rule. And we've talked about this in the past as the not having rules that are arbitrary, the fact that they are based upon science or engineering. And setback is strictly a travel time value that needs to be determined on a site-specific basis in order to be protective. Because if landfills are sighted based upon your new hydraulic conductivity criteria, your 500-foot setback from water is less than 30 days of travel time. That's less than a month. And that's not reasonable to consider that to be protective of a water body. So what I've heard is that the reason we've been making these rules so potentially lax with respect to citing is because New Hampshire somehow has unique geology that's very, very different from other states. And I just don't see that. We are not a big sand pit, and New Hampshire definitely has a lot of low-permeability soil, including barbed clays. And I think we can just do better so that New Hampshire doesn't become the dumping ground for all of New England. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Adam Finkel, followed by John Swan.
Quick process question. I have about five minutes, and I'd rather not talk too fast. In the past, if I had six minutes, would it be impossible to round at the end?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. And I should start by saying, I'm going to be blunt and critical, but you guys are my heroes. I'm one of you. I'm a regulator for my whole career, so I understand the realities and the difficulties. Frankly, I'm tempted to start in the grand DES tradition by saying I'm taking no position on these rules, not at all, but let me tell you for five minutes why the rules are terrible and should be started anew. I will mention three glaring errors that cast a huge technical, legal, procedural, and ethical shadow over this whole effort. The first one is an error of commission, and the other two are errors of omission of never putting sensible provisions in the first place and continuing this pattern. First, the most important aspect of building and operating a landfill is its location, and DES has somehow managed to create the weakest locational criteria in the entire world. I've been looking at other states, provinces, and countries. I've not found a single jurisdiction anywhere nearly as weak as you wish to be. If somebody can find me one, I will gladly apologize, and I'll start referring to these rules as the second, or third, or fourth weakest on the planet. DES recently said these rules are in the middle, and in no sense is that true. So people talk about 5 times 10 to the minus three, and the second layer of 10 to the minus four. In more understandable units, this is 15 feet per day, maybe a little more or a little less if the Darcy's Law formula has a gradient that's greater or less than the porosity, but roughly 15 feet per day. So that's half a mile of travel between the required monitoring periods. For comparison, a common regulation in other states and countries requires connectivity of not less than 10 to the minus sixth centimeter per second, which is about one foot per year, not 15 feet per day. So let me take some of my time... So let me take some of my time to tick off every other regulation in the world that I've found in terms of number of times stronger than DES's idea of what's acceptable. 50,000 times stronger, Illinois, Massachusetts, Texas, Arkansas, and the nation of India. 5,000 times stronger, Mississippi, Colorado, New Jersey, California, and Kansas. 500 times stronger, Missouri, Ohio, Maine, and Florida. 50 times stronger, South Carolina, Vermont, the country of Nigeria. And then on the subgrade, the 10 to the minus four, 1,000 times stronger, Colorado, Missouri, South Carolina, Maryland, Wisconsin, Virginia, Nova Scotia. 10 times stronger, New Mexico, Ireland, New South Wales, and Washington. Again, I may have missed one, and I will apologize if I have. And in doing this, you've misled legislators about what other states are doing. DES told the House Environment Committee, quote, "I would seriously doubt that landfills cited and operated in Maine meet their 10 to the minus fifth standard." I mean, it's very unlikely. Well, within 24 hours of that remark, I got an email from the relevant high-level official at the Maine Department of Environmental Protection vigorously disputing this and remarking that, quote, "I can't imagine that we'd approve 10 to the minus four or 10 to the minus three soils. That doesn't pass the straight face test in my mind." In other words, I can't imagine we in Maine would be only five times, or only 50 times stronger than New Hampshire. That's embarrassing. I know why you've proposed a weak locational criterion and then weakened it three times more in the last eight months. You've made clear that you've met with industry many times and negotiated language with them. A far cry from these listening sessions, you've offered to the plain old taxpayers and voters where we talk and you engage, not at all. You've been put in an unenviable position by one applicant of having to revise your rules while at the same time reading the data in their application. Nobody would trust a pharmaceutical study where the doctors who examined each patient already knew who was on the drug and who was on the placebo. That's called not blinding the study. Even without any financial or other comprehensive interest, it's not possible to unsee what you've seen and be completely objective, either consciously or subconsciously. So in my written comments and in my hearings about the CASA permit, I'll be showing their data and making clear to everyone that you had to weaken this three times from a weak number in order to create a pathway to build a landfill in an active sand and gravel area. The GSL tract would not be permissible under any of the other 27 regulations I've found only here in New Hampshire. How very curious. This is a Pollyanna of a rule. Your entire premise is that plastic liners can overcome any stupid choice of location because they can't fail. Well, I for one would feel better if you showed any real interest in why a landfill in Bethlehem, under your watch, may be failing and is certainly being operated in such a way that the liners are irrelevant due to, your words, a series of spills. So if I can come back afterwards, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, and we're going to ask, thank you, for your comments. If you could fill in another card.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Finkel, would you like to, Dr. Finkel, would you like to take your poster down as well? Next, we'll move to John Swan and then Tom Tower.
I don't mind. I don't mind Dr. Finkel's poster staying up there, so he's pretty.
You have a floor.
Good afternoon, my name's John Swan. I live in Dalton, New Hampshire. First off, I'd like to preface my comments by stating that this is my opinion based on my years of experience and research relative to landfills in New Hampshire, particularly the NCS landfill in Bethlehem. I really wasn't even going to speak today because I feel like this is kind of a dog and pony show put on by DES. I feel that over the past five years, your behavior as a permitting agency speaks volumes to where you stand relative to the current situation in the state of New Hampshire. It boggles my mind to see, as Dr. Finkel alluded to, that year after year, we've advanced legislation in the state to strengthen solid waste rules and regulations to protect water, especially from PFOS contamination, which is such a problem in the state. And then DES shows up to testify with no, not taking a position and then stating why they want to see the bill killed. And the last, House Bill 1620 is a perfect example of that. So I, the one thing I want to comment on relative to the rules is based on my research relative to the NCS landfill, the weak spot, or the Achilles' heel, as alluded to by, or stated by Muriel Robinett during her testimony to the House KNA Subcommittee. The weakness in current citing rules and regulations is the fact that the leachate management area, the loadout area, and I'm referencing the NCS landfill, that is the weak spot. And I feel that the rules should reflect that in that, that area where we've seen numerous spills reported, including the 154,000-gallon spill in May 1 through 3, 2021.
Just wanted to make sure of keeping our comments directly related to the rules and not.
That's what I'm doing, that's what I'm doing, thank you. But that landfill, that 154,000-gallon spill was outside of the state-of-the-art double-lined landfill system. Thus, it's unprotected, it's an unprotected area. And I feel that the rules should require that that, any area where there is leachate management taking place in case of spills, et cetera, should be as protective as the double-lined landfill for the waste. So in essence, within the double-lined landfill footprint, that should be your leachate handling area, et cetera, to protect the surrounding environment should there be a spill or 150,000-gallon leachate release into the surrounding area. And I'll follow that up by the fact that the current situation at NCS, they're having disposal issues relative to the antiquated trucking of the leachate that's generated for disposal off-site. That is antiquated, that needs to change. The next landfill, you should not have trucks, 8,000-gallon tankers responsible for transporting that toxic leachate hundreds of miles away for disposal. And as we're seeing at the NCS landfill right now, they are having disposal issues with finding other wastewater treatment plants that are willing to accept that leachate. And I think you need to take into consideration what is happening with EPA and regulations relative to PFOS, because the PFOS levels in that leachate are sky-high. I just came from the Manchester DPW facility. Thank you. And, you know, those leachate lab reports, those tankers are emptying the 8,000-gallon loads into the wastewater treatment plants, which currently do not have the ability to treat for the removal of that PFOS. So the effluent then has levels of PFOS in it, as well as the biosolids, which, as we've seen in Maine with the land application, then contaminates neighboring wells because of the biosolids being land-applied, which still continues here in New Hampshire. So again, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed in the state, and, you know, it just boggles my mind why DES seems to be such an advocate for this new, unneeded, and as you can see, unwanted landfill in the North Country. So I guess we'll see at the permit application hearings. Thank you.
Your comments? Next, we have Tom Tower, followed by Michael Wright.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Tower. I am the Vice President of North Country Alliance for Balanced Change, speaking here on behalf of NCABC. A little bit about ABC. The alliance was founded in 2008 in the belief that a healthy economy in northern New Hampshire depends on a healthy environment. The North Country Alliance for Balanced Change works to advance initiatives and policies that balance our region's natural attributes and economic interests. We are located on the border of New Hampshire's Great North Woods with a current focus on Forest Lake, Burns Pond, the Yamunuzik, and Johns Rivers. The proposed rules, these rules implement RSA 149-M. The purpose of RSA 149-M, and therefore the purpose of these rules, should be to protect human health, to preserve the natural environment, and to conserve precious and dwindling natural resources through the proper and integrated management of solid waste. We, as NCABC, are preparing a robust package which will submit ahead, which we will submit ahead of the June 5 deadline. It will include at least the following items. One, a comprehensive cover letter that includes legal analysis and a summary of the rulemaking process this set of rules has undergone. Two, a markup of the proposed rules, evaluating them in colors, red for where the rules have become less protective of the environment, green for more protective, and yellow for neutral. Three, a markup of the proposed rules, revising them to what we advocate the rules should be, and this will be footnoted with either peer-reviewed, evidence-based scientific articles and other sources, or explanations from our consultants to support our position. A, we will include copies of the articles and other sources we cite. B, we expect to see our input incorporated into the final rules. And four, a state-by-state comparative analysis of the citing laws for neighboring states and for most of New England. A little bit on substance. Our consultant in our rules comment package will get into more details, but essentially, the proposed rules do not adequately protect against leachate release during leachate handling operations. Two, the rules do not protect against pollution traveling through ground materials that allow pollution to travel very quickly through it, like sand. A, first, the rules allow ground materials with known fast travel times to be used as sites for facilities. And then B, second, the rules do not require characterization of deeper ground materials that carry groundwater for nearby water supplies. Three, the rules do not sufficiently account for climate change, especially in the changing precipitation patterns. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment today. Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Michael Wright, followed by Adam Ford.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michael Wright from Littleton. So I just want to run, I don't want to repeat what some of the areas that people have already brought up, but let me just identify some of the weaknesses of the proposed rules and suggestions for improvement. So on the permit application requirement on 804-02, the weakness is that the rules do not specify any detailed requirements for the environmental impact assessment. An improvement could be include a comprehensive environmental impact assessment requirement detailing the potential impacts on local ecosystems and groundwater and community health. On the groundwater protection standards, which is 804.02, people have talked a little bit about the hydraulic conductivity subpar type of ruling at this point, too, so I would encourage you to improve that to at least, you know, 10 to the negative five. On the surface water protection standards, 804.03, the weakness is that the rule allows for potential contamination of surface waters by only requiring a demonstration that adverse impacts can be prevented or minimized. The improvement is just mandate a buffer zone of at least 1,000 feet from any surface water body and require engineering barriers to prevent contamination. On the setback of 804.04, the weakness is that the buffer zones of 100 feet from property lines and 300 feet from roads are not sufficient to protect nearby communities and ecosystems. So the improvement is just to increase the buffer zone to at least 500 feet from property lines and 1,000 feet from public roads to provide better safety and minimize nuisances such as odor and noise. On the liner system design standards, this rule actually allows for single liner systems in certain conditions, which increases the risk of leachate leakage. So the improvement is that all landfills, regardless of waste type, must have a double-line system, with one liner being a composite liner that meets stringent hydraulic conductivity standards. On the leachate collection and removal system design, and this is something that John was talking about here, the weakness of what we have in front of us is the rule allows for up to seven days of leachate storage on the liner, posing the risk of overflow during heavy rainfall events. Northern New Hampshire, I think, or northern Vermont, has experienced two 100-year rainfall events within the last couple of years. So the improvement on this would be limit the storage time to 48 hours and require redundant systems to ensure that the immediate leachate removal, preventing any type of hydraulic head buildup. As you're probably aware, excessive hydrostatic pressure from groundwater or leachate can cause a liner to rupture. On the storm water management system design standards, which is 804.09, the weakness is designing for the 25-year storm event is not deemed sufficient, given the increasing storm intensity due to climate change. An improvement would be to design the storm water management system to handle 100-year storm event to ensure robustness against any type of extreme weather conditions. Lastly, what is not included in any of these rules is that the citing of the landfill should require measuring the hydraulic conductivity at the bedrock level. Understanding the hydraulic conductivity at this depth, mainly through rock fractures, is crucial for several reasons. The benefits of measuring hydraulic conductivity at the bedrock level are groundwater protection, preventing contamination. By measuring the hydraulic conductivity at the bedrock level, it is possible to understand how groundwater flows through rock fractures. This knowledge helps to predict and prevent contamination of groundwater resources from landfill leachate. And when I think about all the drilled wells in the area, as well as Christine Forest Lake being a, you know, a spring-fed type of water body, it's absolutely paramount that we should be doing hydraulic conductivity at the bedrock level.
One minute, one minute.
Yep, got you. Enhanced site characterization, if we actually do this, have a comprehensive assessment, conducting hydraulic conductivity tests at multiple levels, including the bedrock, provides a more complete understanding of the subsurface conditions. This comprehensive assessment is essential for designing effective landfill liners and leachate systems. So in conclusion, now, measuring the hydraulic conductivity at the bedrock level is critical to landfill citing and design. It helps to protect the groundwater resources, enhances the site characterization, design effective containment systems and ensure public safety. Implementing such measures significantly reduce the risk of environmental contamination and improve the long-term performance of landfill facilities. Thank you.
Next, we have Adam Ford, followed by John Tuttle.
Good afternoon, I'm Adam Ford. I came down here with the notice. I actually left my lawn half-mowed when I went to take a break and read Saturday's article about this in the Concord Monitor. I came down here, I don't usually do this kind of thing, but I was pretty shocked at what everybody else has been talking about today, so I came down, thankfully I had the day off from work. I do work for a government environmental regulator, but I do not represent them, I'm just here for myself today. And I guess why I'm here is because I'm tired of New Hampshire being the, so often being the oddball out when it comes to environmental regulations and other policy issues, when it comes to new states, this being one of them. I'm basically just reinforcing what everybody else has said so far today, the two big things about being hydraulic conductivity and citing issues. I am not a practicing geologist, though I do have an undergraduate degree in geology, I'll tell you a little bit about this. And kind of what folks have talked about, especially Adam and Muriel, I loved what you guys talked about. But the hydraulic conductivity of 15 feet per day is pretty laughable. I can't believe it. I grew up in Maine, as I stated in the newspaper article Saturday, they have a regulation there of 10 feet per year, which is pretty great. I don't know how, after talking to industry, DES thinks this is okay. I recognize that as being a regulatory entity, you often have interactions with the industry and getting their take on things, but this seems to have gone so far to one end that it's laughable. So basically just here to voice my frustrations with that. And I think also, this is great to have a public commentary, but as you guys work for the public, I think it's best if you can incorporate some kind of more plain speak. the public, I think it's best if you can incorporate some kind of more plain speak explanations for these rule changes. I know, you know, you have to stick with what's on the rule books to make it official and everything, but if there's some way to make it a little more approachable for most people, get more people in here, get them more likely to comment. As well, I'm impressed that we have about 20 or so people here, including a couple representatives, and glad you're here, Mr. Jomana, it's on somebody's mind at the State House. I think it'd be better served if, you know, this was made to be a little more easy to understand for more of the public. But that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we have Don, John Tuttle.
My name is John Tuttle from Acworth, New Hampshire in Sullivan County. I'd just like to reinforce all of the remarks that have gone before. I have to say that I really do not give a lot of credence to this process, as I've watched it unfold over the last year or so at the legislature and at the Solid Waste Management Council, where industry showed up in force and we saw DES quickly pivot, which has brought us to where we are today with a set of rules that are, in some ways, vastly weaker than the rules that have been on the books for the last many years. There are some areas in all of the chapters of the proposed rules that are improvements, but frankly, at this point, I think somebody should hold up a red card and say that DES needs to go back to the drawing board and start again. Simply is unacceptable to repeat what happened when DES was formed in the 80s, where industry basically wrote the rules under which we've been operating for four decades. And I think we've seen clearly in Bethlehem, Newport, New Hampshire, what that can lead to. It's extremely disappointing to see that we have not really embraced sort of a 21st century approach to managing resources. Landfill disposal is a thing of the past, essentially. We need to be transitioning to something else. Our policy issues are so far behind at this point that even going through the motions of rulemaking for landfill citing is, again, irresponsible. I'm going to leave it at that for now, but I just got to say that having watched the industry, having watched the state government for 40 years, served on the E&amp;A committee in the legislature, I'm just deeply disappointed. I think particularly given the climate change issues, the 25-year storms, 50-year storms, that's not going to cut it. We've had just major damage in our smaller rural town in Sullivan County, millions of dollars of damage, 100-year storms. Just even putting that in these proposed rules is beyond the pale. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So at this time, we're going to move to virtual in order to let everyone have an opportunity to speak, but anyone who has submitted to speak again in the room will circle back around after everyone who's signed up virtually gets a chance to comment.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that I should have given this to, again, I guess.
Put it right back to them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Thank you. You can go right up ahead and introduce yourself. You may as well, yeah.
Is it my turn now?
It's your turn now.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Nancy Morrison from Mont Vernon, New Hampshire, and I speak for myself. So just to be sure, I have my facts straight, and I will direct this to Director Wimsat. From my attending recent hearings and re-listening to recordings, I believe at the subcommittee meeting at the House Environment and Agricultural Group that you said you were told by the waste industry that the updating and strengthening DES was recommending concerning soil conductivity for proper landfill citing criteria would keep the industry from ever being able to build a new landfill anywhere in New Hampshire. And when asked by a committee member if the waste industry gave you proof or evidence for this statement, you said no. So because of this input, it is apparent that you chose to weaken the soil conductivity criteria, crucial to safely citing a landfill. By an exponentially large amount, more than most states in the country at least. So I just want to make sure I understood this right. I know you can't speak back to me at this forum.
Yeah, please direct your comments.
Yeah, all right. So I'll just leave it at that since I can't do a question and answer. So I believe I do have this understanding right, and I just wanted to make this statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, we're now going to move on to our virtual attendees, and we're going to start with Representative Haskins. When, I believe at this time, you can now unmute yourself. Please state your name, and you will then have the floor. Representative Haskins?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to Representative Kelly Patenza. Representative Patenza, please unmute yourself, state your name, and the floor is yours. Representative? Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't know how to unmute.
All right. We can hear you. Go right ahead.
So I just, the previous speaker, I really appreciate her putting that on the record because I think what she said is extremely important. And I think it's the problem that, that what we've had as representatives in our rules subcommittee have experienced. So there's really been communication from DES to our rules subcommittee in the legislature, as well as then the Waste Management Council in regards with these rules. And the whole purpose of this, which was stated earlier, was about preserving and protecting. And just right on your website, you know, just if you look under wetlands, you know, preserving and protecting New Hampshire's tidal and freshwater wetlands from unregulated alteration. You know, it's found to be in the state's public good and welfare to protect and preserve all tidal and fresh waters and wetlands, including lakes, ponds, rivers, streams, marshes, forested wetlands, and peatlands. So I'm going to talk about, because the rules subcommittee is pretty clear and all of those are recorded, and it seems as if a lot of our concerns have fallen on deaf ears. I'm going to talk about the Waste Management Council, where there should be another voice, especially for the people. So currently, the Waste Management Council sits at 40.
Representative Patenza, this goes beyond the scope of this hearing. We're here to discuss the rules themselves and not the Waste Management Council or its makeup. So if you could keep your comments directed just to the rules, we appreciate that.
Well, it is the rules because you're bringing the rules to them, so it's about the rules. So.
Representative Patenza, it's not about the rules process, it's about ENV SW 800.
Okay, so to, let me go, I'll do it this way. The rules right now, the Waste Management Council is 40% vacant with the public chair missing. So in clinical trials, participants basically are told whether they're receiving the actual treatment or placebo, right? This is known as blinding. I'm going to come there. And it helps to ensure that the trial results are not influenced by participants' expectations or beliefs about the treatment that they're receiving. So if participants knew whether they received the actual treatment or placebo, it could introduce bias into the results, potentially skewing the findings. Blinding helps maintain the integrity of the study and ensures that results accurately reflect the effectiveness of the treatment being tested. DES has had zero blinding in their landfill citing rulemaking process. You can maintain integrity in writing the best rules in the interest of New Hampshire citizens, striking the balance between the industry, all while protecting the environment and the health and well-being and safety when you simultaneously have a permit application in front of you and are only listening to paid by industry experts who will do everything possible to weaken the rules to get that application through. This is where New Hampshire currently stands with regulations, writing rules and permits, and gets their direction, of course, from, you know, they're getting their direction from the council because they're not taking any direction from our subcommittee. So we know perception is reality, especially with outcomes. And in New Hampshire's situation, the outcomes have been highly concerning since the new permitting rules draft have been significantly weakened four times at each council meeting because DES has rulemaking and a permit application in front of them. There is no other reason why. There's testimony that shows this, what that previous speaker just said, and every single person that has been meeting with DES is the industry. Because the rules have been substantially weakened multiple times, the only logical reason for that would be to make sure that they are weak enough to approve the only permit application in front of DES. All of these factors show a rational determination of a conflict of interest. I love what there's other speakers that are going to show you what it needs to be and to go back to the drawing board and go line by line. There's, we're doing that somewhat in a different way on the legislative side as well. And I believe that, I hope you listen, and I hope there's changes that are made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative, for your comments. Representative Haskins, have you figured out your technical difficulties? Are you with us? If so, please unmute yourself. Nope. Okay. We will move on to Elliot Westler. Mr. Westler, please unmute yourself, and the floor is yours. Elliot Westler? Let's move on to Sarah Dusette. Ms. Dusette, please unmute yourself, state your name, and the floor is yours. Let's move to Jackie Elliott. Jackie Elliott, please unmute yourself, state your name. A number of technical difficulties. Let's go through the names again. Elliot Westler, please, okay, I just saw you unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Is this Elliot Westler?
Can you hear me? This is Elliot Westler.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Is, I live in Whitefield, New Hampshire. I want to thank you for this opportunity to comment on the Section 800 rules. My comments for the reasonableness of DES's rulemaking process. I'll go ahead and read my comments and then go onto some questions that DES hopefully will address prior to finalizing these Section 800 rules. As currently drafted, there's a number of Section 800 provisions that are improvements over the existing rules, but also a number of provisions that reflect backsliding. I think that's very unfortunate. But I am going to focus on the one provision that in my mind stands out like a sore thumb, and that, of course, is the weakened hydraulic conductivity provision that DES now proposes. DES's actions on this provision don't even come close to passing the smell test. Given that DES knows that one party or other will be taking DES to court over its new Section 800 rules, it would seem a good strategy for DES to just do the right thing and not allow strong political actors such as Casilla and Governor Sennett to direct DES to do things that are adverse to its mission statement. DES freely admits that it weakened the conductivity provision after complaints from landfill developers that the original standard would make it too difficult to cite a new landfill in New Hampshire. While that complaint is obviously concerning and should have been carefully considered, DES has presented no evidence, consistent with the testimony of Nancy Morrison, that it consulted with other stakeholders. In other words, it accepted new evidence from landfill developers without providing an opportunity for other stakeholders to comment on such evidence or to provide counterfactual evidence. In my mind, that's strike one only. DES is silent on any actual fact-based evidence that landfill developers provided to DES to demonstrate that the original standard would have an adverse impact on citing a new landfill when a new landfill was needed. And as far as I can tell, landfill developers also have not provided any such evidence, although it is not to them, it's not, the onus is not on them, the onus is on DES. In light of the failure to provide such evidence, it seems clear that DES's decision to weaken the soil, the hydraulic conductivity standard was made on arbitrary and capricious grounds. And in my mind, that's strike two. Moreover, it seems clear that there, in fact, is no evidence that using the original conductivity standard would impede needed landfill development. On the other hand, there is significant evidence that the original conductivity standard would have no significant effect on landfill development. This evidence includes the fact that a map of soil conditions, which DES originally sponsored but now disowns, shows that only some 14% of state land would be off limits to land development based on soil conditions. And another piece of evidence that supported the original conductivity standard is that states which ran New Hampshire, including from on Maine, have much stricter soil conductivity standards than what DES now proposes, with no apparent effect on landfill citing. And in my mind, that's strike three. If DES wants to have any credibility with respect to this matter, I recommend that it should try to learn from the SB 61 fiasco from last year. In legislative hearings, the now-departed Assistant Commissioner Mark Sandborn tried to defend a totally indefensible argument that DES had considered all stakeholders prior to doing the bidding of a deal cooked up with Governors Sennett and Casilla. Because DES contends that it was forced to weaken the conductivity standard to ensure that a site for a landfill would be available when a landfill was needed, it behooves DES to provide the evidence on which that DES decision is based. So please, if not now, then as part of the record for this rulemaking, I urge DES to answer some basic questions on how various conductivity standards will affect the availability of landfill sites.
Mr. Westler, your time is up. If you have, if you have questions, and they are clarifying questions, you can add your name into the chat again, and you can be called on after everyone has had a chance to speak once. Please be reminded that questions are for clarifying the rule and not to enter into a debate about the merits of the rule. So if you would like to continue to speak, please go ahead and put your name in the chat, and we're going to move to the next commenter. Next, we have Sarah Dusette. Please unmute yourselves, state your name, and the floor is yours. Mr. Sett? We're going to move on to Jackie Elliott. Jackie Elliott, we will, we will set you up to unmute yourself. Tyler, are they both unmuted on, okay?
Yes.
Is Linda Haskins back on?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We're going to move back to folks in the room, and we hope we can help Representative Haskin, Sarah Dusette, and Jackie Elliott. We'll get back to you, we have plenty of time. So I'd like to call back up Adam Finkel in person to continue testimony. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm a little embarrassed to ask for a second round, but I do appreciate it, I've very much left. Back to the conductivity real quickly. I'm just dismayed that if you look at 804.02C, and then you also look at your own rule 805-10E4, you're actually trying to create a set of land, or one or more landfills you're actually trying to create a set of land or a land, one or more landfills where the so-called protective layer, where the leachate is supposed to collect and be pumped out, is five times more protective than the so-called drainage layer below. I mean, that alone should show you how crazy this draft rule is. Please tear this up and start again. The excuses for why you need a standard that's 5,000 to 50 times thousand weaker than other states, countries, and provinces, we've talked about. One of them is from this map. We've had quibbles over this map. Of course, it's not accurate to the nearest pixel, but about 85% of the state is underlaid with glacial till that is relatively impermeable compared to sand and gravel. So let's not fight about whether it's 84 or 86 or 80%. You can throw darts at this map, and most of them hit the green area, and you've got people apparently telling you that they found the only track left in the state, uh, which happens to be a sand and gravel track, and that's preposterous. Uh, the other reason before I just move on to finish is, uh, Director Wimzat told the House Committee a few months ago, and I think I'm quoting directly, "Having sand and gravel on site is, is helpful for the operator." Well, I just look forward to your thinking about what might be helpful for a healthy environment and the people you work for rather than what's convenient for the applicator. And then there's just two aspects of this rule that, that have never been in the rule and that I found elsewhere, and I think you should consider adding to the rule for the first time. First, the word aquifer is not found in these rules at all, and the word bedrock is only found a few times in connection with, let's not bury waste too close to the bedrock. But normal states require the applicant to investigate the bedrock and the aquifers at the proposed site, not just test the first one-tenth or less of the vertical extent of the site. After all, at 15 feet per day, pollutants can reach an aquifer 300 feet below grade, and I'm sure you know why I chose 300 feet, in three weeks following a leak or spill. So Maine has 300 words of requirement about this, but here are two sentences you could just cut and paste right into the rules, and I'm quoting. "Sub-service investigations are required in sufficient number of locations to properly describe the superficial stratigraphy in the bedrock beneath and adjacent to the proposed solid waste boundary. Pump tests must be conducted at selected locations as needed to evaluate aquifer yield and conductivity of bedrock fractures." Now, that's, that's right next door, I think it's been there for 30 years, there's not a word about that. And you're basically allowing operators to say, "We have something that is round and it's orange, and we think it's an orange because we've looked at the skin and we've, we've bit into it and it's sort of bitter, and we don't know whether there's an orange underneath it or a time bomb underneath." And then finally, unless you somehow truly believe that valves, alarms, and other gadgets work perfectly with no human oversight, maybe you should consider requiring that every landfill operator have at least one person on site every hour of every day of the year. Maybe an operator could be willing to lower their annual revenue of 50 or so million by about 50 grand to hire a guard. If only New Hampshire had some experience with what can happen to a landfill when it's left unattended over a three-day weekend. Oh, you do. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I realize that's not the purpose here, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, John Tugill again, Accord, Sullivan County. One thing I would like to ask that DES consider is measuring these draft rules against a policy framework, starting with your mission statement, which talks about protecting environmental quality and public health. I think that every line of the new solid waste rules needs to be measured against your mission. Um, I think also you need to be looking at the hierarchy, which places landfilling at the very bottom. It appears from my review of the rules, this chapter and others, uh, that, that these rules accommodate landfilling and continue to make New Hampshire, um, very inviting to the, uh, the waste industry across the region. I think these rules should, should really bring us, uh, into line with what is going on in the rest of New England and not proposing weaker standards than any of our neighbors. Uh, and the third would be the solid waste plan, which is almost two decades late, but which puts a great emphasis on waste reduction, and again, just simply as a policy, um, goal, uh, I think you want to be measuring your proposed rules in terms of, are they going to assist the state in meeting, uh, those goals? In other words, I think the focus of the rules needs to be protective and not permissive as they are in this draft, and I would strongly urge that, again, we go back and, uh, and start the process again. I think that the, the situation at the Waste Management Council really demonstrated that this has not been fair, and it has not been balanced or open, um, adequately either to the legislative process or to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Shall we try this, the ones again? Do we think we have Representative Haskins available to unmute themself, herself? Representative Haskins, are you still with us? For anyone who is experiencing technical difficulties at this point, we're going to ask that you call Jeremy Lewis at area codes 860-387-9931. So that would be Representative Haskins, Sarah Dussette, and Jackie Elliott. And let's move to Elliot Westler to speak again. Mr. Westler? We will enable you to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Um, I, um, ended, uh, just before I wanted to post some questions that I hope DES will address prior to finalizing the Section 800 rules, um, is, uh, and let me just read them first. If DES believes the soil map sponsored by DES but now disowned by DES is not accurate, what, if anything, has DES done to update that important information to serve at least at a minimum is a screen for determining how much land area is suitable for landfill development, which obviously feeds into the consideration of the hydraulic conductivity standard that makes no sense. Second, what scientific information specifically did DES use to justify that the original conductivity standard would impede needed future landfill development? Third, for both the original standard and the weakened standard, what evidence was developed by DES on the availability of potential sites for future landfill development that might be procluded? Fourth, for the existing major landfills in the state, including Turkey, Mount Carberry, Lebanon, Nashua, what evidence has DES to develop to determine whether either the original or weakened soil conductivity standard would prevent further development at those sites? And finally, if no such evidence has been developed by DES, does DES consider answering those questions to be an important part to finalizing its conductivity standard? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Westler, please be sure to include those questions in your written comments should you choose to submit them, so that we can take a look and address as we can. Thank you.
And, and I encourage DES to answer those questions.
Understood. Thank you for your testimony.
Did you guys hire that garbage truck outside the Beeball Day?
Uh, so we're going to try Representative Haskins again? If not, do we have Sarah Dussette on the phone? If so...
We don't want to hear that at Forest Lake.
...to unmute yourself. Sarah Dussette?
Imagine hearing that at 7:00 AM at Forest Lake, Monday through Saturday? No thanks. It's annoying, isn't it?
Do we have Jackie Elliott, either virtually or by phone? Thanks for your patience, folks. All right, we have one person trying one more time by phone, so let's give them a All right, we have a couple of folks working very diligently in the other room. If anyone else in the room would like to speak again, please fill out a comment card and bring it to the back of the room.
Please, we, uh, I have Sarah's testimony if she can't get through, so could I fill out the card and read it for her if she can't get through?
So that's, uh, the question is whether or not, um, Ms. Morrison can provide Sarah Dussette's testimony? We can't confirm or deny that this is Sarah Dussette's testimony, but, um, you are welcome to provide testimony.
Okay.
And Ms. Dussette is more than welcome, obviously, to submit her testimony in writing.
Yes.
Uh, from now until June 5th.
But I can also speak, speak it today?
Please go ahead.
Would I do it as her or as myself?
You should do it as yourself.
As myself.
You can state that you are, are speaking on behalf of, of Ms. Dussette, but we would rely on her written testimony.
Of course, and she'll be signing that.
Understood.
I don't want to do this too soon, but I take it you just haven't had luck.
Correct. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Sarah, this is for you. This is Nancy Morrison from Montverne, New Hampshire, speaking for Sarah Dussette of Whitefield, New Hampshire. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Sarah Dussette of Whitefield, New Hampshire. I speak as a deeply concerned citizen, and for the third time, I am giving public comment on updating regulations. I dearly wish that I were here to commend the work of the department, but sadly, this is not the case. After asking twice for the needs of the environment and public health to be given priority or at least equity over the recommendations of the waste industry and the governor, I am here to ask for that again. I ask that the agency to reconnect with its mission, quote, "To help sustain a high quality of life, protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire. The protection and wise management of the state's environment are the main goals of the agency," unquote. Seeing these proposed rules, I must conclude the agency has abandoned its mission. Professionals devoted to independent analysis apart from industry prejudice testify that regulatory standards have been lowered repeatedly as the review process has advanced and the current draft is stunningly lax regarding safe landfill siting. Many of us heard testimony before the House Energy and Agriculture Committee that protections were diminished after consultation with waste industry representatives. We have to ask why industry and politicians' interests now dominate the initial proposal. Those stakeholders' welfare is not included in the mission of the department. The absence of parity in influencing department decision-making is evident all around us. Recently, members of the House Environment and Agriculture Committee lamented the unresponsiveness of the department to their suggestions for stronger protective regulations. In addition, it seems the meticulous recommendations of a highly qualified independent hydrologist along with a former federal regulator and scientist have been ignored alongside the concerns of skillful conservation organizations and members of the public. More generally, as you know, thousands of people have engaged with DES and the legislature over several years, all pleading for respect, responsibility, and accountability from the Waste Management Bureau. I speak for them. You assured us greater safeguards were forthcoming as you conducted your long-awaited update of landfill rules. And where are we now, eight months in? We've experienced a feeble, biased process that disregards input other than what you have gleaned from the industry and the corner office. Frankly, public comment is a joke among those of us who are dependent on that process to engage with you. I will leave it to the professionals to parse the flaws in the current document, but as a citizen, I am called to ask again for accountability and responsiveness. I ask, as Rep. Representative Jim Crichton did, please tell us what has improved in the new regulations compared with the old that left us incredulous with their insufficiency. There is no indication to us that the agency is working for the welfare of the environment and the people. Observing an unwavering resistance to innovate in regulating landfills, misleading and negative testimony provided after statements that the department has no opinion on legislation that is critically needed for smart waste management, noting that some of your talking points were effectively refuted recently by Representative Jared Sullivan, an economist, we see the lack of initiative and enthusiasm for your true mission. Frankly, it seems a useless exercise to generate thoughtful testimony and to speak to you. I know you will ultimately be held accountable for the decisions you are making. I have to recommend that you pivot from the charade of representing our interests. The public will not back down on having decent protection from our regulators and legislators. If you choose to favor industrial advancement and environmental degradation over the health and welfare of our state and its people, you will be faced with trying to defend that sorry position in court. The process of public and legislative comment that you have offered is a sham, and no one is fooled. I ask you for better. Nearby states manage well with significant protective siting rules and regulations for landfills. Commercial operators are glad to commit to facilities there. We can do the same. Let's not be bluffed by the protestations and threats of corporate developers or intimidated by lame-duck leadership. It is not too late to redeem the process. I wish you the will and integrity to meet the challenge, as I hope once more, for your earnest consideration. Thank you for this forum today.
Thank you for the comments.
I'm sorry?
Said, "Thank you for the comments."
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a break for a few moments to see if we can troubleshoot the issues that we're having with our final two speakers, and we will reconvene in just Ms. Dussette, I just want to let you know that Nancy Morrison has read, uh, some testimony into the record already, but you are more than welcome to, uh, read it if you would like.
Oh, thank you.
So Sarah, you just need to hit star six, which I think you already did, and the floor Well, I think we got you.
I'm here.
Mr. Sette?
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello. All right, the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
Okay, hi, hello, everyone. Um, I'm grateful that Nancy read my testimony. I will not, um, ask you to sit through it again, I will submit it electronically. I just want to add that I'm really heartbroken by the testimony I heard today. Um, I think it's right on, it's too important not to get it right, if I think the information that DES needs to make really protective decisions is on the floor, and, um, I'm really hopeful that, uh, we can consider, um, somewhat of a restart and make something good of this process. It's been so long anticipated, and it's desperately needed, and, um, credibility of the agency is absolutely on the line, that was my main message, and, um, it's time to get this done, no matter who the stakeholders are apart from the public, the public needs to be included, and, uh, thank you, I appreciate the forum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sette.
You're welcome.
Do we have Jackie Elliott, either virtually or by phone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, how do you...
Well, how would you, I guess this is probably a good example of why we should not all go to keyless ignitions. My name is Jackie Elliott. I live in Waterboro, Maine. I am transplanted here as a native Granite Stateer. I now have the dubious privilege of working on waste management policy on two sides of the border. I have been, as always, very impressed with the knowledgeable testimony provided by the public in this instance. Clearly, people understand what's involved, and they also have very informed input as to how things should move forward in a, in a better way. Maine, I often hear Maine invoked as to our landfill siting regulations, and I will grant that on paper, there are provisions that should provide protections, but I will just caveat that with the fact that regulation is only good as it's implemented and upheld. It points to the fact that we must have good regulation and good regulators to see that that policy works for the people. I'm really disheartened with the process, as I've monitored it, that has gone on around this change with the landfill rules. I've heard ample testimony today from the public of how the public has very much experienced, I'm also, I'll cut to the chase because I may never have another opportunity, an abuse of their rights. There's a certain inalienable right to clean air, clean water, and our agencies, given the responsibility of oversight of those arenas, owe the public, and I will state they owe the public more than they owe the industry. And I'll, I draw our attention to DES's own stated mission from their website. The mission of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is to help sustain a high quality of life for all citizens by protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire. The protection and wise management of the state's environment are the main goals of the agency. And I know, at least with the public attending here, we can all agree that that mission statement feels as though it's being woefully inadequately applied. I would encourage you to follow through with the quest, and the questions, and the seeking of the public to do a good job here, and these rules that are being put forth are not a good job. We can, I, we're gonna be honest, we can agree on that, I'm sure. So please, have some dignity, have some integrity, and move forward in a way that truly serves the public and the beautiful state of New Hampshire, and preserves those things that are irreplaceable once they are destroyed or degraded. You have the opportunity to do that, please take it, and listen to these very wise citizens of the state of New Hampshire who want to assure that New Hampshire is a wonderful place to live now and for the generations ahead. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and for bearing with the technical glitches and, and getting us all in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your patience as well. So we will now move to, back to a couple of folks in person. We'll start with Representative Germana. Please come up, state your name, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Nick Germana, State Rep from Keene. I, there was one thing I wanted to mention earlier and I forgot, which is, has to do with, and the exact number where it occurs in the draft rules, I'm forgetting, but it has to do with the average, taking the average of the, I think, hydraulic conductivity rates. And one of the discussions that we've had, this actually goes back quite a long time to discussions about SB sixty-one last year, has to do with whether, the more appropriate language should be representative. One of the, the concerns that I've had and, and repeatedly expressed is that average is manipulable, right? If, if you take a, a number of samples within an area where you know where you're going to get an outcome, you can manipulate an average very easily. I think from what I've heard from DES testifying before our committee, representative is genuinely what we're aiming for here. Now, how exactly it is determined that a site will be representative perhaps needs a little bit more fleshing out, right? So one of the things that we heard in testimony was that if an application were to come in and clearly they had done all of their drilling in one very small area, that this would be returned and that would not be an acceptable application, or that those, those numbers would not be taken to be representative. But what is not clear based upon the current rules is how exactly a site is determined then to be representative. So again, I would encourage that that should be representative, not average, should be the language with regard to the hydraulic conductivity, and the clarity be given in rules as to exactly how it will be determined that a certain measure is in fact representative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Fred Anderson in person. Please come down, state your name. State your name, your affiliation, your city or town, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Fred Anderson. I live in Whitefield on Forest Lake, and I'm here speaking for myself. Water is the most precious commodity we have in the world. It's soon going to be the most valuable. What we're up to here is trying to protect that, not for the next six years or for the next eon, but for generations. My wife reminds me that the earth can do without us very well. We can't do without the earth, and so your charge is to care for it. I've been following this conversation for far too long. My discipline is theology, not engineering, but I've learned more about waste management in the last five years than I ever wanted to know. And what I hear is that technology is always the solution to the problem. I beg you to give up that falsehood. We've seen how the technology has worked so well today, right? Told the double lingers don't leak, we'll put a third liner on them. Please back away from the technology and start thinking seriously about the land that we have. Can we let hydrology reign over technology? Right now, it feels like you're letting technology reign over hydrology, and what we're doing to the earth is not pretty and not helpful. Over the last several years, I found myself wondering how all of this would have changed if your environment, if your agency was called the Department of Environmental Protection rather than service. And I'm aware, as I'm sure you are, there's a lot of conversation out there about who you're serving. Are you serving the people? Are you serving the environment? Are you serving the industry? How would this report have changed if you were an environmental protection agency rather than service agency? Finally, I urge you to go back to the beginning and start all over. There's no shame in not meeting your deadline. You've not met deadlines in the past, let's get it right. And if mistakes have been made, let's say we've made the mistakes and let's get on with it. But for heaven's sakes, bring us something that is going to be worthy of you and your aspirations, as well as what we, the people of the state, are praying that you're going to do. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we don't have anyone else registered to speak, but we will leave the hearing open for another moment to see if we have any latecomers, anyone who would like to speak yet. Seeing no one else who has registered to speak, either in person, virtually, or over the phone, I will prepare to close the hearing. Tyler, if you could share the last three? Written comments can be submitted before four PM on Wednesday, June fifth, 2024. I want to thank everyone for your patience and for your participation today. The hearing is hereby closed. Thank you very much.